Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to our forum. I am Chelsea Gwabetz and I am the President at the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation. And I'm so excited that so many of you are here tonight as we embark on important discussions about our community. I want to thank all of the candidates who came out tonight, so if we can just give them a little round of applause. Thank you for this time. Unfortunately, one of the candidates called in sick a few hours ago. He sends his regrets and really wishes that he could be here with us tonight, so we'll follow up any communication with him as well. And that was...
Larry Frost.
Larry Frost, who's running in District 3.
Three.
So, the Minneapolis Regional Federation, we are the umbrella organization that brings together unions, union members, and community groups to advocate for workers right in their own local communities. And we work throughout seven county jurisdictions, so we cover a lot of area. And we have over 78,000 members that are a part of our organization. And over 9,000 union members live right here in the city of Bloomington, which is a significant number of workers who happen to be union members. We work on political work. We do legislative work. We do community organizing. We do organizing to organize union members into new unions. And most of all, we're out there supporting each other. When one union needs something, the other union is showing up for them. When one community group needs something, we're there to stand up for them as well. And our membership is very diverse. So, we represent a broad swath of union members, from educators and teachers to construction workers, to janitors, to letter carriers, state employees, government employees, a wide variety. We even represent people in the arts and music industry, manufacturing. So, our union members, our 78,000 union members come from very different walks of lives, and we all come together under this banner to improve lives for working people. So, tonight, we're not only going to be hearing from these seven candidates who sit behind me, but we're also going to break out into small groups so that we can hear from all of you as well about what is your vision for a city that works for all of us. So, we turn on the news at night, and you know, a lot of economists and people are telling us that our economy is in a recovery. But I know that's not what we're all feeling at home. That's not the conversation that's happening at our dinner room tables. Income disparities continue to grow. Young workers, they're loaded with crushing debt coming out of college. Housing hasn't fully recovered. We're in an affordable housing crisis throughout our region. And lowest wage workers in the low-wage industries, their wages have been completely stagnant. And this is a particularly important issue for me. As I come out of UFCW 653, I come out of retail. So, I worked in grocery for eight years. Some of that I was in school, a lot of that I wasn't. I was an adult, working in a grocery store. And I think this community particularly is in a good place to have a conversation about the value of service sector hospitality and retail work because of the industries that are housed here in this community and the dignity of work. When I went to work, I went to a community of people who really cared about our store, they really cared about our community, and they cared about their families back home. And that work needs to be valued, and that's really an important part of our conversation when we're talking about Bloomington. So, union membership continues to decline, and retirees who are on fixed incomes are being squeezed on all sides. So, these are the real conversations that are happening at the dinner table in our communities. So, we know that today's workers are facing historic economic challenges, and we're fighting this in a system that's designed to be a race to the bottom. This is being done on purpose. And as history has shown time and time again, those with influence and power at the top are working to divide the workers and the working class. And this is very true even today as a national conversation around race and economic justice unfolds. From the bombing of the mosque right here in Bloomington to the white nationalists marching in Charlottesville, Virginia, the moral compass of this country is being tested, and it's more important than ever that we are standing together and will not be divided along these racial lines. And these horrific events that bubble up are really a symptom of a broader conversation we need to be having about the day-to-day challenges that our communities, and particularly our communities of color, immigrants, and other oppressed communities are facing day-to-day. And the labor movement is a part of that fight. When we look back at the history of the labor movement, the good, the powerful, and even the more difficult times, it's a stark reminder for me that what we do impacts more than just our membership. It impacts the broader community and the broader social fabric and narrative that we're a part of. So, for unions here, building power doesn't stop just at the workplace. Building power in the workplace is mightily important and a core part of our agenda, but it is not the only thing. It is our responsibility, particularly in this moment, to continue to push our communities to hold up all workers in all of the places of their lives where they're impacted. So, that's a tall order for the seven of you that challenge, take on those challenges. But this is where it starts. It starts right here in these local communities. So, in spite of these monumental factors that I just talked a little bit about, I'm really optimistic about the way our local communities are responding. At the MRLF, we believe that back-to-basics organizing and the power of human relationships and being connected in our own communities is going to be the solution. And that is how we are going to move beyond this narrative. And that's why I'm excited to see all of you here tonight to engage in that. So, our cities are our laboratories for democracy. They hold great power, and they are the closest entity, the closest level of government, to workers and to the people in our communities. You all know better than anybody what's happening in your local communities, so you have a lot of responsibility that comes along with being so grounded in what's happening. City workers, many who are unionized in the city of Bloomington, are on the front lines every day making Bloomington work, literally making Bloomington work, plowing your streets, answering your phone calls, filling out the paper, and are the front line for how the city interacts with the community. And these are many union members. Bloomington is a major economic hub for the region, and the decisions that are made here about workforce and economic development and standards have impacts beyond just the city of Bloomington, but on the entire region. So, this area is extremely important when we talk about the future of work and where things are going. Other public institutions, such as our public schools, rely on a healthy relationship between the city and its students. And cities can choose to support employers and provide incentives to those who provide living wage benefits, not just to the end of providing living wage benefits, but to improve the viability and health of our communities. And these things are being done in cities across the state and across the country. Cities and local officials have both formal and informal avenues to help protect workers from wage theft, something we've already started to discuss in Bloomington. Cities can fight to protect their local control, and cities can be a part of a plan to expand organizing in workplaces. We can be partners in providing economic opportunity and growth. And so, I provide these just as a sampling of ideas to get you all thinking about what's possible in this really difficult moment. You could add many other things, affordable housing, a ton of other topics that could be a part of this conversation. So, I'm really, I look forward to hearing from the candidates on some of these issues. But I'm also really excited about the second part when we break up into small groups, because we could come up with the best policies, and these seven folks can help us come up with the seven, you know, great policies and pass them. But if they're not being done in partnership with community and empowering people to access their novocrycy at a local level, it's not necessarily going to build the power that we want to build in the community. So, I'm going to hand it over to our moderator for the evening, Jigme Yugen from SEIU Healthcare Minnesota. Jigme lives in Bloomington and is really active in both the local labor movement and the local immigrant rights movement. And I personally want to thank Jigme for his leadership and his mentorship for myself in this role, and thank you for facilitating this evening. Enjoy the forum.
So, a round of applause for President Chelsea Gwabetz. I must say, Chelsea is one of those visionary leaders, labor leaders, who has taken the MRLF to be more involved in local and suburban politics, something that we've never seen before. And hence, the first-ever Bloomington City Council Candidate Forum organized by Labor. Thank you, Chelsea. And then, we have the amazing staff from the MRLF, Graham and Casey, who've been working tirelessly with the Bloomington Action Team to make this happen. So, thank you, folks. Before I start introducing the candidates, I wanted to see if there are any elected officials in the room tonight. Any elected officials? We have one. Dawn, welcome. And again, folks, welcome to the first-ever Forum Organized by Labor in Bloomington. The candidates today will come in as Councilmember Jack Beloga, Shawn Nelson, Mike Arulfo, Councilmember John Olson, Patrick Martin, Nathan Coulter, and Councilmember Eldon Spencer. Round of applause for them, please. So, again, my name is Jigme Yugen. I'm the Vice President of SEIU Healthcare Minnesota, one of the largest healthcare unions in Minnesota. We have about 34,000 members. I serve on the AFL-CIO Board and elected as a trustee at the MRLF with Chelsea. So, it's an honor and a privilege being here, and as a resident of Bloomington, I look forward to a great evening. So, I'm just going to go through the rules and the format for this forum. Each candidate will have a minute, a minute for opening remarks. The speakers will actually be selected randomly. We did some computer stuff, and they select names and numbers. I will ask the candidates two different questions, two different rounds, and each candidate will have a minute and 30 seconds to answer. Again, these were randomly picked, the order. After a minute, you will hear a warning sound, which goes like...
Oops. It should say...
And let's give a round to Marcia Sitzma, who's going to keep us on time and make sure that we leave the room in...
That's the sound. That's the sound. If you don't mind, Will Bean.
Right, exactly.
Want to hear it again, Jack?
That's the sound. And I will sincerely request and hope the candidates will stop talking then. Thank you in anticipation. The first part of the program will be recorded, actually, by the Bloomington Cable Access, and we will be, and they will be broadcasting this periodically through the election season. The recording will also be uploaded in YouTube's channels and a bunch of social media outlets, too. So, after the questions, the candidates will be interacting directly with the audience. We'll have small discussions, and candidates have been randomly picked to be in which group. We'll talk further, more about it. This will be a huge opportunity for the residents and the candidates to interact and build relationships and hear and listen to each other directly. And since we have very limited time, I will ask that the audience refrain from clapping or commenting on responses by the candidates. And please, if you haven't already, please silence the cell phone. And please feel free to take pictures, load it up on your social media, and tell folks what's happening in Bloomington. Once again, welcome again to the Bloomington City Council Candidate Forum organized by the MRLF. We start with the candidate's opening statement for a minute. We start with Jack Beloga.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here and to the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation for putting on this first forum. I am Jack Beloga, and I'm the current District 3 Councilmember. I have been engaged, I'm a second-term member and seeking a third. I have been engaged with the city of Bloomington for over 20 years. I have served on almost every board and commission that the city has had. I have had a successful business career in commercial real estate as an executive of Fortune 500 Company and as a small business owner. I bring that business and financial acumen to the city to help it meet its challenges. I am a graduate of the University of Minnesota with a bachelor's degree in both business and accounting. And my vision for the city is a high quality of life, good jobs and housing, superior educational opportunities, and outstanding city services at affordable cost.
Thank you. Shawn Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Shawn Nelson. Thank you very much to the MRLF for arranging this, to the staff and members for attending tonight, and thank you for everything you do in our community. As Chelsea was mentioning, our day is impacted in so many ways by your work, whether it's our kids going to school, healthcare, transportation, construction. The impact of labor is indisputable in our community, and we all benefit from it. The impact that the labor movement has had over the history in terms of safety, economic security, equity, and other economic and social issues is extremely important, and we live those issues today. I, too, have a business background, most of my background. I have a business degree, a master's degree in business administration. I'm a small business owner. I've been immersed in the, frankly, on the management side of things. But I remember what my dad told me after I graduated from college. He said, one, I'm proud of you, and two, never forget the impact of the people that work in the field and how much more they know than you. So, I keep that in mind every day.
Michael Arulfo.
Hi, my name is Mike Arulfo. Thank you all for attending this event, and thanks to the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation for organizing this event. Well, I believe that local governments have a mission to support their communities so that individuals can lead enrich lives and to pursue opportunities for success. When I was seven years old, I immigrated from the Philippines to escape poverty and to pursue an education and to lead a successful life in the United States as my grandmother wanted. I'm running for City Council because I believe in strengthening schools and protecting green space, and also to support families so they can have opportunities for success like I did. I came, before pursuing this, I came from a successful career in business, and I'd like to represent Bloomington and to help families succeed.
Thank you. John Olson.
Thank you to the MRLF and to Graham, Casey, and Chelsea for putting this together. It's a great, great idea. Hope you got this because there's not much time here. I think reelection to City Council, work being done that needs to be finished. But I want to put current and future goals in a context, clear sense and concern that there's a strong history of American values under attack today. One of my value sources is the Rotary four-way test. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? These values are core to who I am as I serve on council. I am pleased with Part Two tonight, the opportunity to hear from a small group of you, as I look forward to the 25 or so of you who are planning to meet periodically with people like me. Dialogue, hearing concerns, hearing ideas, talking together to see how we, together, can build a better working relationship to make Bloomington a better place to live and work.
Thank you, John. Patrick Martin.
Hi there. I would like to thank everyone again for coming and for this opportunity. I am a product of a union household. My dad was a traveling hardware salesman, and my mom was a Northwest Airlines flight attendant. And it was because of her representation that I had the opportunity to be the first member of my family to graduate college, that I got to have a successful career working with churches and nonprofits like the Salvation Army, and which is why I had the opportunity to serve on the Bloomington Advisory Board of Health and Parks and Recreation Commission to see how many families in Bloomington today are not blessed with that same opportunity, that same representation, and the same tools they need to lift their kids up so that 20, 30 years from now, they're helping to move the city forward as well. I think, simply put, we need to support our seniors. We need to encourage young families to not only move into town, but stay in town, and bridge the divides in economic development that we've seen on either side of 35W for going on 30, 40 years now. It's not reinventing the wheel, but it's something we can get started on now and something we can make a big impact with.
Thank you, Patrick. Nathan Coulter.
Well, thank you all for being here. Thank you to the Minneapolis RLF for organizing this. I'm Nathan Coulter. I'm running for the at-large City Council seat. I've lived in Bloomington my whole life. I'm a product of the public schools here. I work for and with our Bloomington legislators up in St. Paul, and I also serve on the boards for the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. I'm running because now is not the time for status quo leadership. We live in a changing city, and we need government that's going to adapt to that and embrace those changes. We need forward-looking leadership that's focused on making progress for all of us. I believe that my roots in the community, my experience working with government and labor, I'm proud to have the support of the Minneapolis building and construction trades, and organizing individuals around making things better. In addition to my vision for a future of Bloomington, will allow me to hit the ground running and really get to work. I look forward to having a conversation with all of you tonight.
Thank you, Nathan. Finally, Eldon Spencer.
Thank you. And again, also, I echo my opponent's thanks to the work that you do, and also on behalf of my 102-year-old mother, what the healthcare service people do for her to make it a better life. As the more seasoned of the two candidates for District 2, I guess my job is to try to convince you that my experience can advance the causes that you believe in. If you've actually done as I've done and represented a teacher who's been abused by a supervisor in a grievance hearing at a VOTEC school, or a nurse who's been treated arbitrarily, you feel it in the gut instead of just in the abstract, the right to grieve. If you've had a chance to go to the United States Supreme Court and defend the Human Rights Act against challenge, to apply it to groups like Rotary and the St. Paul J.C.'s in my case, you feel it in the gut, the importance of the right to, the opportunity to be voted and hold office regardless of gender. If you do as people in my firm done to represent the Masaba Pellets, the strike, I'll stop here, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And those were the opening remarks. A round of applause, they were in a minute's time. So, I'm going to start with the questions, and I'm going to read this question, and I'm going to repeat it twice. It's a pretty long question, so... Many of the lowest-wage workers in Bloomington do not have access to a union, and often have no ability to bargain over working conditions or wages with their employers. So, again, many of the lowest-wage workers in Bloomington do not have access to a union and often have no ability to bargain over working conditions or wages with their employers. What do you feel the city should do, if anything, to improve workplace standards and the right for employees to form a union? Again, what do you feel the city should do, if anything, to improve workplace standards and the right for employees to form a union? This is a minute and a half, and we start with Shawn.
All right. Thank you for the question. It is a very important issue that all people have access to a union, to union representation, that they have safe work environments, that we have standards for those environments. As was mentioned earlier, we have a large hospitality industry within the city, and making sure that we have standards within those places for people is important. I think that we also need to expand beyond just those conditions and make sure that we have places for people to live. We need to focus on affordable housing. We need to make sure that they have transportation to get to and from jobs. We need to make sure that they have opportunities to engage in education so that we can take the people at the lowest-wage spectrum and give them the opportunities to get higher-paying jobs within our community because of education, because of the transportation to connect them. I think a lot of times, people are in jobs because they don't have other, better opportunities, and we need to, as a city, make sure we're developing those opportunities for people going forward.
Thank you, Shawn. Eldon, simply.
Thank you. Going back in my own faith tradition to Pope Gregory XIII, Popleio XIII in his Rerum Navarum Encyclical, and then through the New Deal and the right under the National Labor Relations Act, that is a respected right by most good-thinking people, I think, to organize and to choose your own representatives, if in fact, that's the will of the group to do so. Certainly, the right to bargain collectively for wages and terms and conditions of work is elemental. And in fact, what I've seen, actions that somewhat jeopardize this, whether it be in the transit strike and the actions taken by the Metropolitan Transit Commission against the workers to question the validity of that union, whether it was PEC or the air traffic controllers back in the 80s, these not only are wrong, but in fact, they are counterproductive. If you are an employer and there's not a good grievance procedure, you end up with a very dissatisfied and demoralized workforce. And so, the right to bargain when the majority wants to form a bargaining unit under PELRA or the NLRA is important, but also just the right not to be treated arbitrarily, which I've had more direct experience with. In closing, let me say, I don't think, you know, we've had situations, some country... Oh, I'm out of time again. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
The low wages are a problem and have gotten worse, as has been indicated. Wages came up, and we had a strong middle class for many years, in large part because of the activity of unions and getting decent wages. There was also social pressure, and I remember reading about unions getting started in the railroad days when people would be injured in an accident on work, and they were out of work, there were no benefits. So, I think we need to do this broad approach by appealing to the ethics, to the values of our whole nation, including our businesses. And one of the things that I take, feel good about is that I've worked with all groups of people, including businesses, and I've built good working relationships with them. And I think that they can be responsive to that. Whether or not we work toward a minimum wage in Bloomington, as Minneapolis has, we can learn from that experience, and that's not out of the question. But there are also pushbacks to that, and that's why I believe that we need to go for the broad push, working through faith communities, through your efforts, through my efforts, and generally the public. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Michael?
Improving the lives of families and particularly improving wages is an important issue. I come from a union family, and my father was a member of ASME Union for 30 years, and my mother, a member of the local nurses' union. So, I know firsthand how important it is for families to have good training programs that need to be supported, because it allowed my father to move on from a job that paid him $10 an hour working in a glass factory to a livable wage, working as a corrections officer in the county correctional facility where I came from. So, I think support, allowing the people that work in organizations to form a union so management stays neutral, I think that's important and should be encouraged. I also believe in supporting progressive policies like prevailing wages, because I believe that through progressive policies like prevailing wages, that wages can be worked to be livable, and also benefits can stay at a decent level so that families can succeed.
Thank you, Michael. We'll go with Patrick.
Yeah, I guess, I was just reading earlier today, and it kind of shocked me a little bit, that private sector union membership today is the lowest. It's been nearly 100 years. Little under 6% of all workers in the United States are in a private sector union. So, it's no wonder that today, your average family is earning less money than they did in 1997. That's at the same time that in the last four years alone, a two-bedroom apartment in the city of Bloomington climbed over $300 a month. There's some things we need to do for those low-wage workers. First, on the proactive front, and second, kind of the systemic. On the proactive front, our Bloomington Public Health Department is right now reaching out to our hotels and restaurants, especially in Bloomington's east side, to make sure they have understandable workplace wellness standards in place. That not only increases employee satisfaction and retention, it also provides them an outlet to report things like wage theft and abuse in the work site. It also helps them access to information to know their rights and potentially be able to move forward using unions as a resource to help them out. But that doesn't go anywhere if you're not addressing the systemic issues. We need to make sure there's affordable childcare options by using some of our parks and recreation resources to invest in summer programs like the View and the Mini View that allow parents the flexibility to choose the most positive work environments for themselves, not being tied to an employer that's abusing them over the long term. It's simply critical that not only is Bloomington... It's simply critical that not only is Bloomington taking the proactive steps necessary to get a foot in the door in the workplace, meet workers where they are, but making sure that they are not tied to an employer because of those low wages and lack of childcare and housing options.
Thank you, Nathan. Jack?
Thank you. Well, as I said in my opening statement, my vision for Bloomington is a high quality of life, good jobs and housing, superior educational opportunities, and outstanding city services. We support the people who are in those lowest-paid jobs in Bloomington in a number of ways today. We have a Human Rights Commission that investigates and reports to us on any infractions that are brought forth. We have the Public Health Department, which is mentioned, which does inspections and looks after the health and safety and general well-being of not only those employees, but their families in addition. We inspect businesses and license them to make sure that they are maintaining safe working conditions. And lastly, we believe that everybody has the right to earn a living wage, and along with the school district, are providing opportunities for education, for advancement, and alternative means of education so that the career path doesn't mean that it's only for preparation to go to school. It's trade schools, it's other forms of education, and it's working splendidly, and I have to congratulate those folks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And Nathan?
Well, it's an interesting way to phrase this question, because I think one of the ways that we can ensure that we improve living standards is by ensuring that folks are able to join a union and form a union. I believe that is a fundamental right. Unions are family. My grandfather was a Teamsters mechanic at Southdale Ford. My mother was a Minnesota State College Faculty Union member and president at Normandale Community College for 39 years. There are a lot of steps that we can take in sort of the smaller end of things, including employer neutrality and PLAs. We can also focus on ensuring fair scheduling and making sure that folks know when they're going to work and that the work is going to be valued. I think the other more underappreciated role of elected officials is providing oversight, is by ensuring that we are talking to folks and making sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and that they're valuing the work that their employees do. I think for me, it comes back to valuing the work, the work that public employees and private employees do to make our community better.
Thank you, Nathan. And that was the first question. A round of applause. Thank you. I just wanted to also say that these questions were crafted after discussions with residents who are union members and community leaders. So your second question is, "Bloomington has become an extremely diverse city, both racially and economically, but there also seems to be a growing tension." Again, "Bloomington has become an extremely diverse city, both racially and economically, but there also seems to be growing tension. Many residents living in the east and west Bloomington speak of conflicts on whose voices are heard or represented at the city council. Then there was an attack at the Dar al-Farouq Islamic Center." I repeat, "Many residents living in the east and west Bloomington speak of conflicts on whose voices are heard or represented at the council. Then there was also an attack at the Dar al-Farouq Islamic Center. What will you do to take on these challenges and unite our community?" Again, "What will you do to take on these challenges and unite our community?" A minute and a half. We start with Jack.
Thank you. Very interesting question, and it's one that the council has been working on for a while. You've heard the phrase "One Bloomington", and it's trying to really take and eliminate those old phrases of "East Bloomington, West Bloomington." We want this to be "One Bloomington." Additionally, what we have done is, is we have created about a year, year and a half ago, a list of strategic initiatives. These are meant to be the focus of city council activities for the next three to five years. Those are, in no particular order, community amenities, environmental sustainability, focused renewal, high-quality services, community image, and probably most importantly, inclusion and equity. This being the most important one, we've overweighted it in this first year and given a tremendous amount of time and attention to this item. You, I'm sure, have heard that we've gone and we're having classes, instruction. We've invited the community, but we've also focused on training our employees on how to be respectful, how to deal with people, of all people, not just people who look like us.
Thank you, Jack. Patrick?
Right out of college, I participated through an AmeriCorps affiliate, and I was stationed out in Lawrence, Massachusetts, teaching seventh-grade humanities. It was a student population that was 96.3% Puerto Rican and Dominican. And I'll never forget, in my first week teaching the kids, I asked a student, "Well, what do you want to be when you grow up?" And the student said, "Well, mister, look at me. I'm never doing anything." And then gestured to the color of his skin. And for the first time, while I had read about it in books and while I had heard about it on television, structural inequality and the soup of low expectations that these kids were operating in every day had sunk down bone-deep. And I made it my mission that day and throughout my career at places like the Salvation Army, to make sure that those kids saw light. And let me just give you one example, because while the city of Bloomington can't solve every problem, this is where we can make some progress. Right now, we have a pilot program through the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Department called the Parks Ambassadorship. The whole purpose of this program is to reach out to primarily our diverse communities, which are concentrated on the East Side, and provide them with the avenues and the information to get their children enrolled in things like after-school activities, Bloomington Athletics Association sports programs. Again, that's not reinventing the wheel, but it's separation, it's unfamiliarity that breeds that fear, and that over time, left unchecked, left unaddressed, creates those hateful and violent actions. I saw it for my very first day of work out of college, and you see it every day here in Bloomington. But boy, oh, boy, we have tremendous opportunities to make progress.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. This relates a lot to what I said in my opening comments. Some of you were at the event that brought close to 1,000, give or take, people to Dar al-Farouq, and we met on the football field. And thank you for those who came. The support was obvious to those people who are part of that center. You may have heard me speak unusually briefly, because I didn't have much time, but what I chose to say was that each one of us has a responsibility to take this on, and that means how we interact with each other in the workplace, how we interact with our neighborhoods, and that kind of thing. We are working to, we struggle with the need to make the city council and our commissions and other committees reflective of the community. And there are some problems with that because we can't officially say that we're looking for somebody of a certain nature. I've reached out. Potter's House is an organization. I'll be having a meeting with her soon, and that's working with African-American kids. I had a conversation with an Ojibwe Indian as I've been going door-to-door. That's going to lead to us getting together again. And I pushed for neighborhood dinners, starting about two, three years ago, and they are happening. In fact, we are soon going to be having a, I think it's the first planning meeting to get them organized.
Eldon?
Thank you. Back at high school, we had migratory workers, mostly from Texas, who were actually living in the back of their trucks. They didn't even make it up to the bunkhouses, which weren't that good. And a friend and I decided the best thing we could do to help those kids, their children, get an education is to find ways to get them housing and to settle in our hometown in southern Minnesota, which we were pretty successful in, and I might add, really helped our wrestling team back at Blue Earth High School. But I've tried to keep in mind fairness, because that's what my parents taught me. We tried to pass those values on to our daughters. We asked them, after their college education was completed, to give a year of service to a nonprofit if they wanted to pay us back. And I now have, I'm fortunate to have grandchildren who have their own degrees of diversity, Jewish, South Asian ancestry in our family. So we have a very interesting and great table, and it makes it better. One of my clients, who's on the trustee of the Islamic Council of Minnesota, called me, are we still talking, called me after our council stood together behind the mayor and made a joint statement of support for our Islamic brothers and sisters that were all in this together, and thanked me so much for doing that. And so let me just say, just as with the labor laws that we talked about, you could read them in the abstract, but when you feel it in the gut, and we actually, hopefully, are all, the better for the response this community's had to the tragic events of recent weeks and months.
Thank you. Nathan?
Well, I think this is actually one of the advantages of running citywide in Bloomington, is that I'm able to talk to folks who live all over the city, and it's in fact, one of the reasons that I'm running. Because the reality is that the issues that affect one of us, regardless of where we live, will affect all of us now, if they don't already. One of the key aspects of leadership is having proactive conversations. And in fact, this issue of unity in Bloomington is something that I'm focusing on as I have just started my graduate work at the Humphrey School at the U of M. I believe in having these proactive conversations, continuing to meet people where they are, going straight to their doors, if I have to. But also, you know, whether it's a formal town hall here in the council chambers, or even, "Hey, I'll be at the Caribou on France and Old Shakopee on Saturday morning. Come have a conversation. Talk to me about what you want to talk to me about." I believe when you engage folks in the process that way, we'll still have our disagreements. We'll still have our differences, but we can all respect the outcome, and that's how we move forward together. Not too long after the incident at Al Farouq, I was out door-knocking in the neighborhood, and I talked to a Somali woman. And I don't recall the particulars of our conversation because her kids were running around and making noise and being kids. And she had that look that I have unfortunately seen on my own mother's look that says, "Can you please quiet down? I'm trying to have a conversation." And it was just a very nice reminder that, at the end of the day, we all want the same things. We all want to make things better for our future.
Thank you. Sean?
Diversity is a strength of this community. It's one of the reasons that my wife and I have chosen to raise our kids here. Having a diverse school that our kids can learn from is extremely important to us. The attack on the Islamic Community Center is absolutely abhorrent and horrific, and I think it has been, as Councilmember Spencer mentioned, hopefully, a way that has pulled us more together as a community. When I look at this issue and what we can do as a council, as a community, to work on these issues, I think there's a few things we can do. Jack had mentioned training staff, and I agree with that. I think that part of that needs to look at our police and fire services and other public professionals, making sure that they're equipped with the ability to safely serve the entire community here. Some of my experience has been working with the Met Council, and they have identified within Bloomington concentrated areas of poverty within their comprehensive planning process. Income inequality is huge, but the wealth gap between those who have a lot and those who don't have much is extremely large. It's much bigger than that, and it's largely driven by access to housing. We have people paying, you know, 50% or more of their income on housing. How are they ever supposed to get ahead? We have people that are blocked out from homeownership and growing equity. Those are things that our city council can address and work on and help our community with to reduce that gap between those who have and those who don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
So diversity, it's something that I've grown up with my entire life, having immigrated from the Philippines and growing up in a 99% German-Irish Catholic community in rural Illinois. About 100 different conversations at the dinner table with my parents to build the confidence, to build the cultural skills necessary to be successful in a country that I would always look very different. And my family experience, from the language that we spoke at home to the foods that we ate, were very, very different. So this is something that I've grown up with my entire life. And, you know, I have an intimate knowledge of this issue, and highly educated in it, and chairing the Cultural Diversity Committee in college, well into being an active member in Bloomington and other communities as an activist on many issues. So I think if elected to the city council, I bring that experience. I bring the skills developed over a lifetime to cross cultures and be very comfortable doing that. I think that's a huge asset to the city of Bloomington. If I'm elected to the council, that's great, then the diverse communities in Bloomington have a voice, and they have somebody that they know they can reach out to and have the same common experience growing up, learning, struggling with language, struggling with culture, and I think that counts for something. Even if not elected to the city council, I think I would like to stay active and bring those skills to Bloomington.
Thank you. Those were the two questions. Now we'll have the candidates give their closing statement. Again, a minute for each candidate. We'll start in reverse order with Eldon.
Thank you. There's so many issues we haven't touched on. Our law firm has the opportunity to represent the health and retirement plans of the bricklayers, the cement masons, and a number of other trade unions. Keeping our public employment system adequately funded so we don't have these underfunding issues is absolutely critical. Again, you know, feeling it in the gut through my experience is really important, just as Chelsea was saying at the beginning, reading the history of labor, you know, it's a lot different from an obvious thing like discrimination is costly if you hire somebody with less talent because of the color of their skin. You've just lost productivity. But when you read Howard Fass's biography of John Lewis, then you really feel it in the gut. Let me just close by saying, like Randy Johnson, my committee chair, like Dave Durenberger, who I work for, I appreciate your support, whether you support me, my opponent, both of us, or neither of us. I'm going to be listening to you. I don't believe in just supporting those who voted for me, but everybody, and so if I'm elected, I want to be a voice for everybody.
Thank you. Nathan?
Well, thank you again to the Minneapolis RLF for putting this all together. I'm so excited to see labor getting involved in this way, and I think it's going to help all of us be better candidates. I want to thank my fellow candidates as well for being here and having this conversation. As Eldon said, there were so many other issues that I'd love to have a chance to talk with you about, so I'm looking forward to doing that. I believe that a vote is more than just expressing a preference. Your vote is an investment in the kind of future that you want to see for our city, for our community, for our entire state. I believe that my roots in the community, my experience working with different officials at all levels, my vision for moving us forward and making progress for all of us really qualify me to serve on the city council. And I'd encourage you, if you don't get some question answered tonight that you'd like to, get in touch with me through my website, neighborsforNathan.com. They say the first rule of politics is always ask for their vote, so I'm asking for yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'd like to echo Nathan's thanks, especially to our hosts. I think we all should just take a second to recognize that we are incredibly lucky to live in what is right now one of the strongest communities in the state, whether that's our consistent economic growth, the nearly 40% of our entire city that's park space. Next city doesn't even come close to that. But we also have to recognize that with changes in technology, changes in the workplace, changes in demographics, the same strategies that we have used for upwards of 60 years to get to this point simply aren't going to get us over the hump for the next 60 years. It's critical that we support the senior population, a third of which are now living alone, that built this community, that we attract, welcome, and retain the new families that will fuel our growth moving forward, and that we finally, while we've said "One Bloomington" for quite a while, make some concrete progress on bridging the divides on either side of our central highway. It's, again, I've said it a few times tonight, it's not reinventing the wheel, but it's rolling up our sleeves and putting the elbow grease in to reduce those structural inequalities and to fuel and continue our prosperity through the coming century.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. The fact that I'm wearing a red shirt is not a political statement. I have not been part of a party for a long time. Please check this out. Strong communities happen because of good relationships, and so we need to work hard to do that. I work hard to connect with the area that I am primarily responsible for. We make decisions for what's good for Bloomington. But in northeast Bloomington, I hang out at Kennedy High School quite a bit. I went to their connect day this year, when they were coming back for pictures and getting organized. And while there, there was a table with four Latina girls who were inviting students to get involved in the club that they had, and somewhat facetiously, I asked if I could join, because I didn't expect the answer would be okay. They said yes. So DACA makes it a difficult thing, and I need to be very careful about that, but I plan to get back. Nate the Great was at one of our block parties, and he indicated that he's an HVAC. He wants his kid to get into that. So we're working on getting together to collaborate about that. Thanks for doing this.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to echo the thanks to the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, as well as the folks here that have attended this event. It's always great to see this much community engagement, particularly in a general election. So, thank you all for being willing to come here and spend an evening here, talking to us and hearing about the issues. I'd like to close by saying that we're all fortunate to live in the great city of Bloomington. And, you know, the thinking that God is here with Bloomington developing was focused largely around the large businesses. And I'd like to change that mentality to focus on the neighborhoods and the families and the small businesses because I feel that that is critical to the development of Bloomington, especially in attracting younger families. I think that kind of thinking has to shift. Bloomington's an aging city. It's getting older, both demographically as well as the infrastructure. And it's imperative that we address those issues by attracting younger families to Bloomington and also by rebuilding the infrastructure in Bloomington so it can attract those younger families. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you again for attending tonight and to the MRLF for hosting this event. I very much appreciate it. In addition to your support and your vote, I am really here to ask you to share your knowledge, your experience, your help to understand how policies and decisions that come before the city council will impact your lives. Your contribution needs to be recognized, workers need to be protected, and I think we share common goals about economic fairness and strength, safe working conditions, and protections for families within our community. And I want to work with you on those issues on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jack?
Thank you, Jack. I want to thank you all again for coming out. This is a very comfortable environment for me to be in. I grew up as a young lad going with my father to the Teamsters Hall, Local 120 over in St. Paul, which he was a member of for 45 years. And my first work experience was also similar to Chelsea, where I was a member of the Grocers' Union for about six, seven years. I'm asking for your vote here tonight. I am because the most important job of a city council member is to listen, to take in, to understand, and to act upon those items that are important to the people, the constituents that we represent. I know how to do that. I have leadership, experience, and integrity and use that to the advantage of all residents of this city.
Thank you. Those were the questions and answers. And before I thank the candidates, I just wanted to take the privilege, as a resident of Bloomington and as a union leader, we keep talking about how Bloomington has more jobs per capita than either St. Paul and Minneapolis. We have the biggest service industry in the state, but we also have the largest group of unorganized workers. And hopefully, under your leadership, we can change that. Bloomington, as we discussed, has an unstoppable growth in diversity and I hope we continue to grow. This city and its residents continue to play a huge role in our governor's race and our presidential race. I hope we can get people out of the polls and keep making that change and difference. Thank you to all the candidates and to the audience here. We do have a Bloomington Action Team. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, right here in the city hall. Please join us. They bring in pizza and a lot of drinks, Coke, it's the products, actually. And we do have a lot of issues that we need to talk about, a lot of concerns, but we thought it best that the candidates interact directly with the residents and listen to them. So, again, thank you again for being incredible with the time, sharing your vision, your knowledge, and spending time with us today. A round of applause to all the candidates. Best of luck to all of you.